Marion, do you have the telephone?
I am, thank you.
Great, stand by please.
Where she is at?
No, and I just downloaded it, because I read it on my computer and I just downloaded it right before I came here. Yeah. You did get that. I believe my, the email version I read had this on, but I just downloaded this version.
Okay, there. Must be something with the links there. We couldn't get into Facebook and do things earlier too. Joey McDonald, okay. And Bethany.
Here.
Jim C.
Here.
Melanie Skinner over.
Here.
Michael Campditch.
Sure.
Shannon McHenry.
Here.
Timothy O'Connor.
Here.
Thank you.
Who runs the consent agenda?
Move to a draw.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. All in favor?
All right.
opposed?
Yeah, I had a thought too.
The ordinance is, I would, I would prefer a hand before we move to a second fee. Okay. So, seven thirty-four and seven thirty-five.
Mike and I had the same thought, that was my thought.
Mr. Mayor, I suggest those can move to consideration of resolutions and ordinances on the agenda.
Down there. Yeah. We'll move it down there. Does that work?
Sure.
Anything else that anybody wants to discuss? Moving on. Hearing from the public, it's open for public comment.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Matt.
Well, I just, we should go ahead and approve this, amended consent agenda. Right?
Uh-huh. Okay.
So, move to approve the amended consent agenda.
Okay.
It's been made and seconded to approve the amendment to the consent agenda. All in favor of that?
Hi.
Opposed? None? Since, resolution order. All right, here from the public, open for public comment at this time.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
But, members of the council, I'd like to introduce Mr. Greg Stone, he's here from Alaska Department of Natural Resources. He works in the timber shop areas here, as your packet described, to talk about the forest resources and State Forest Resources and Practices Act. Greg, would you like him to reach your call up on the phone?
Yes. Call worker on the phone, I believe we have two people that are attending tonight, one is Allison Powers, and she's a special assistant to the state forester, in charge of the board of forestry, facilitating that, that board. I believe we also have my supervisor, Hans Reiki, on the phone as well. He's the regional forester. Would you like to speak further at this time or relate to the agenda?
I don't know if you're speaking on, that would be, that would be ideal.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak, Matt, on behalf of a large part of what makes a division tick, namely, it was enabled the division of forestry to exist in the first place as its Forest Practices Act. I personally am the area forester and our geographic area responsibility is from Haines, down here in the Ketchikan, Prince Island area. I'm charged with forest practices implementation on public and private land. With respect to the lands that we manage, we specifically manage state forest lands in the area, and we also manage the resources, the forest resources on general these lands and other lands that the state manages through the department, like say on subdivision classified lands and such. The Forest Practices Act is applicable to both public and private lands. It is set up to be reasonably, not reasonably, regionally applied, is what I like to say, and reasonably. By that, I'm referring to the idea that lands here in the southeast generally have a different forest type than lands up in the south central area and up in the Fairbanks northern area. Um, Mr. Bowling made your request known to me about a month ago, and the focus at that time was to, you know, respond to your specific questions with respect to the Forest Practices Act. And based on the topics that you laid out in front of you that you discussed in the past, some of it may focus on land management issues which are related to forest practices that you put their separate function within our statutory authority with respect to state land and private land are, you know, basically stemming from how that private land owner used their property. So, if I could make a point with respect to the diversity of land management and forest practices, there's the concept here that land that is managed by an entity that they have rights of ownership and with respect to their resources and the land. Whereas, public resources that may transit land, i.e. like water, wildlife, or fisheries or public assets, and there's a certain charge to agencies that hold the public's general interest, and that's the primary purpose of the Alaska Forest Practices Act. I have a few talking points here, I'll run through here, and I'm not trying to stick to a specific agenda, but I didn't want to omit anything, so if you could bear with me as I run through some of my talking points, it should take you a few minutes here. So, the three points that John reached out to me, that you've had a general curiosity about, the stream side setbacks, clear cut sizes, and the general standards that are applied to the forest practices there. With the exception of the stream side setbacks, these are relatively broad topics, even with respect to the stream side management, you can spend quite a bit of time talking about those subjects. I purposely have stayed away from delivering a, we've got a lot of canned presentations on Forest Practices Act. By that, I mean, we go into very specific detail depending on the applicability and what we're trying to get across to a given audience. So, we made those general PowerPoints available through attachments to your events, and I'm willing to talk at any level of detail that you would like to do so, but at this point, I just wanted to, you know, based on my experience, some people are very interested in the minutia and others are more interested in the broad aspect of the topic. So, I'm going to focus on the broad aspect of it first here. So, land management decisions generally reflect our collective perspective for society's values, and they also focus on the rights of the landowner and the citizens. So, that's, I already mentioned that to you, and that's a reoccurring theme in forest practices. Forest practices walks a fine line in some respects between the public's best interest and the landlord's interest in their rights and values. They're not always the same. They are, this can be in conflict depending on how, as you're probably aware of by sitting in the position you're in. On private lands, you tend to see this in the language of the act and how we approach it, and using the terms of prudent and feasible. In other words, the public's perspective needs to be tempered with what is practical for a member to implement. With respect to management on a public piece of land, you'll, you'll see a term consistent with the maintenance of the quarter. Dot, 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 like you can insert fish or wildlife, number of subjects like that. So, in a very real sense of the word, forest practices deals with a constitutional issue of taking our, our national constitution expects the rights of individuals and corporations to be fairly represented in contrast to the public's rights. So, as we restrict management on private land, part of what forest practices does, we, we have to dialogue about the appropriateness of that taking. By, an example of the taking might be, this is somewhat based on your perspective on why it is, if we apply stream side setbacks where no harvest can occur on a private piece of land to protect the public resource, which is water and fisheries, if fish are present, we've essentially restricted what the landowner can do on that piece of property. So, we, we have to justify the importance of that piece of ground to the public resource when we work through a resolution with the ordinance. So, how do we do that? We do that in a number of ways. Common courtesy is fundamental, but building on that aspect of it, we look towards using professional judgment. We hire people that are trained in the concept of what we're doing there. So, in this instance, if you're dealing with fish, you hire habitat biologists, understands the importance of the habitat that you're looking at. You hire foresters to come to the conclusion about what's, you know, what you need to grow trees, what you need to, what you can feasibly, not practically speaking, do with a piece of machinery or a harvest operation adjacent to that water body. The act itself starts off like most bodies of government, it aligns in intent. Okay? And it powers a mechanism for feedback to occur so that you can adapt with, as times change, and people's perspective on, on the resource change, or the resource changes. So, by that, I mean, when you pass a law in the state of Alaska, you develop statutes. Statutes reflect the legislature's intent, and it's typically a compromise. Yeah, I would unbest, we say forest practices is a compromise. From that perspective, agencies implement that statute and they try to build consensus in the form of regulation. Regulations typically are something that you can implement, statutes. This is based on my experience of looking at statutes. So, with respect to resources, there tends to be a little bit of ambiguity, whereas resources become more specific. In the, the case of forest practices, we've regulated a large part of what's called the best management practices, which deal with, you know, how you look at specific aspects of resource management, whether it be cutting, road building, actual logging, or how you would manage a piece of ground, and the priority of different resources in that process. In the process of developing regulations, as I alluded to at the start of it, the, my, my little spiel, my little ditty here, we compartmentalize it by forest types, and as you move forward in north, up in Alaska, your, your type of streams also change. So, forest practices has to reflect that. Streams generally tend to be larger in northern part of the state because of the bigger drainage there is versus down here in southeast where we're, we get a substantial monitoring, but our streams are generally smaller. So, what we can do from a practical standpoint reflects, that is an example. The act deals with a number of different issues having to do with land ownership and with respect to what kind of things are typically causing problems with respect to the public interface there. So, you, I, as you probably are very familiar around here, we have issues with respect of managing fish streams next to timber harvests. As you move north in the state, we have more fire danger, so we manage our slash baiting and timber sales with that in mind. And we also, because it's a drier climate, we have more insect issues which we have to address. So, how is forest practices designed to be updated? So, I, I pose this question to you with the idea that you have a concern over resource management laws, I would be here. So, there is the concept floated by your manager that you may want to comment on certain things you're seeing in front of you on the island as you come and go. So, the, the act is set up with a board overseeing its implementation, Board of Forestry. It's composed of multiple parties that have vested interest in forest resources. So, there's like nine members on the board, I believe, and they represent recreational interests, mining, forestry, industry, biologists, and in my basement talking about such a matter, I curiously left one or two people on, their sort of interest or concern, I think, on offense. The state forester chairs the board and oversees the effective management of it. The state forester is, is a semi-political position, he's appointed by the governor and, you know, approved by the legislature by respect to this place. by respect to his placement on board. So, so first stop, from a productive standpoint, if you wanted to, after your dialogue here, make comment on Forest Practices Act, you wanted it to go somewhere conceivably would be to make comment to the Board of Forestry. And the conduit that through for that typically is through my division. It's the Division of Forestry, Allison Aaron's is the facilitator for that. She's on the phone and she's quite take notice and observe your perspective on forest management, forest practices. So, she'll have an idea of where you're coming from. The actual mechanism here of how that comment gets picked up and dealt with is established in regulation. We basically take the comment in, the board builds a sense of consensus of whether or not it's an item that they would like to address. And based on your testimony or your comment, we then typically form a science and technical committee. If it is a subject that warrants action, we do a literature search, see how other states function with regard to that, that interest and then come back with recommendations to the board. The board takes those recommendations, builds a sense of where they would like to go with it and they create a separate committee after this initial one to explore the subject and they try to solve the issue through an implementation committee. That then comes back to the board and the board can take part or all of it or none of it and send it towards the Division of Forestry to develop regulations to solve the issue. So, with respect to reporting, we typically, if I say typically, it is normal for us when we roll onto a timber operation, whether it be public or private, we rate the operation for implementation of the act and regulations. In other words, we're judging based on a scale of one to five, whether or not the best management practices have been implemented. That doesn't, that's separate from whether or not they're effective. And over time, we can bring the two issues together, implementation versus effectiveness, two separate types of judgment and, you know, modify what we're doing so that we are both implementing and effective. So, to close here and you've been very patient with me on a subject that, you know, I focus my career on and perhaps are focusing a part of your very valuable time on here, like encapsulate the idea you know, the act is set a statute that, you know, the state recognizes the importance of forest resources. And they established the Board of Forestry, the Division of Forestry to implement that concept of importance. And it recognizes the difference in management between private and public lands and the BNP's within the regulations deal with the two separate types of land management that way. A very common misconception of Forest Practices Act is that it's a permit system. In other words, you have a plan, submit it and somebody in position of authority that says this is a good plan, you can do it and give me, you know, X amount of dollars. And that's the last you typically see of them other than incident on inspection. Forest Practices looks at it differently. We ask for a plan of operations and we don't, we do not authorize the action to occur. Provide feedback to the landowner as to whether or not their actions are going to basically be within the scope of the act and the regulations. We have to do that within a very set period of time unless we're talking about public land. Public lands, it's an undefined period of time. We then go on inspections to determine if they're following their plan. Now, we can also take the other course where we advise a land manager that their plan is not something that is reasonable to do, you know, or is likely to affect public resources, in which case we have enforcement powers that we can create a stop work order, a directive, or we can find if there's an actual violation of process. So, that exists out there. We use it from time to time, but it is one of these things we tend to avoid through the process of education. The other thing to understand here in opposing this is the act is designed to adapt and adapt within a scientific and technical perspective. So, we have trained professionals on staff in three different agencies that focus on this topic. The Division of Forestry is the lead agency with respect to coordinating the other two agencies which are the Alaska Department of Fish and Game, Division of Habitat. They represent fishing wildlife issues. With respect to specific water quality issues and whether or not water quality has been compromised, we look to the Department of Environmental Conservation. So, with that in mind, I'd like to close and thank you for the opportunity and I will be available for comment.
We're gonna do this now. Okay, you appreciate your being here. Okay, a lot. Cause we definitely have, I have some questions. I know some of the other people do too. You mentioned clear cut sizes, but you didn't say anything about the sizes. Are there any regulations? And I understand there's a difference between state logging and private logging. And so, I'd like to know evidently on the private logging, there is no size. It's pretty obvious from what's happened on this island that it's just blown away. And I'm wondering what the state size is and I'm wondering why mental health got listed as public when it's a state agency, because the size of mental health cuts that are going on on the island are ridiculous.
So, I see you having two veins of questioning there. One is having to do with size of clear cuts and the other has to do with the perspective on how mental health trust lands are managed.
Yeah.
Okay. Clear cut size is not regulated in forest practices and that comes back to the issue of kicking. And with respect to a resource that is owned by a private entity. On the public side, there's, it's viewed under our forest management statutes and more specifically in land management statutes where we are charged in a public setting to provide resources in perpetuity that are renewable or appropriate where they are deemed to be used. So, we exercise that through land planning documents like the what else out there, plan or the state forest, like public documents that govern state land specifically. With respect to mental health trust land, they're viewed as a private entity having to do with their trust charge. That is something that I could provide you with the empowering statutory language for that ruling, but they're viewed differently than university or municipalities are. The act talks about what makes state land and municipal land and university land. That's, those two entities, the university and municipal lands are what's called other public lands. Mental health trusts, based on the way this, they were empowered through the legislature, they're viewed as a private entity. That comes back to their trust responsibilities or free share responsibilities.
So, I take it, are, do you personally come over and are you, I'm assuming you've been over to the Nakadi area to see the big state cut over there?
I was out there yesterday.
Yeah, I kinda thought maybe from looking at your boots you might have been.
I did.
I've received a lot of complaints about that area, about stream by, stream side buffers not being there. I've actually had loggers comment that they're logging where they shouldn't be logging. It just concerns me. That's, that's heavy fish habitat over there. It used to be some nice deer area, but and that's one of the big problems on this island now is there's no deer left due to the, you know, the deforestation that's happened on this island. I mean, it's all, there's no food under any of this stuff that you see here for miles and miles and miles and miles. So, that's the same that's gonna happen over there now. But it just, some of it just doesn't seem to make sense that the state is doing this to the people on this island. Somehow all of the, we keep doing these stupid trades like the Forest Service gives, takes the land all behind Catch Again so it can stay pristine and then, oh boy, and it gets transferred over here to get cut. And that just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I know it was nice for the loggers for a while, but it's getting real old when you can't go find a deer to eat anymore.
Okay, so I can capture some of what you're saying and convey to a certain extent I can to mental health trust, that's those individuals that they have a manager in Catch Again. I don't manage mental health trust lands. I'm not trying to transfer, you know, anything here, but I'm just making you aware that the Division of Forestry does not manage mental health trust lands. And DNR, which Division of Forestry is part of, at one time did, but because of lawsuits that came down in the state and regrouping of plants, there was a perspective among people that sued the state. It wasn't being managed to the high enough fiduciary level to represent the interest that the trust is charged with representing. So, I'm trying not to give you a bunch of guff, you know, back, but I'm trying to give you a little history perspective. Now, with respect to forest practices, they're looked upon the same light as, say, Sean C. Kip Fox Corporation, Sea Alaska, with respect to their stream side retention areas. They're required to leave sixty-six feet either side of the stream. They can choose to leave more if they want. They can't leave less. And if they do not file for a variation to cut a tree within that sixty-six foot retention, then it's essentially a violation which we prosecute. You know, with respect to specific charges of where that's occurred, you know, we're always open to, you know, the public's eye in that regard. We get out there and inspect the units. I have a guy over here at least once a month, other than myself, looking at their operations when they're operating. There is no perfect construction site or logging operation. So, it's a, it's a feedback loop we have. But if they cut it in an area and they're not offering it up there, we generally prosecute. It's not just the general. It's a pretty clear line in Forest Practices Act. We have some discretion, like if they're not grading a road as an example. We talked to them once about grading a road because runoff is following a nearby stream. We come on there again, if they've tried but it's still not effective, we'll keep working the issue and not necessarily file a violation. We look at negligence inquiry, we turn around and we deal with it. If you get a response out of that thing, it's appropriate to the public interest. But if you're cutting a tree within a retention area that's defined, it's not just defined in regs, it's defined in statute. The legislature was very clear about that. So, that's my response with respect to cutting and retention area. I know that there's, like I started earlier in my introduction, you can go down a lot of rabbit holes talking about what's occurred in the past, what's being proposed with respect to streams. I'm more than willing to talk about that, but the retention area serves a purpose and it's been scientifically defined what purposes are within the act for preserving basic habitat, fisheries. And that's backed up with reeds, reeds studies. And it may not look good, but it functions with respect to fish habitat. And I'm not providing fluff to that.
No, that's fine. Maybe this isn't a question for you. Maybe this is one maybe for the legislature. Does the mental trust money actually go into a trust or does the state just put it in a standard, do you know?
It goes into a trust. And it's managed, I believe, by board separate from Board of Forestry. They manage all their assets, real estate, minerals, et cetera. Paul Slank can probably better respond to specifics of how the trust works. He's the gentleman who touched.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Do you feel there's that much shade left in those stream zones even with removal of variance tree?
I'm sorry.
Do you feel there's enough shade left in those stream zones to maintain that water temperature necessary for fish habitat? With removal of variance trees, I kinda question that.
There's there's eight criteria that the Division of Forestry or some Division Habitat to discern whether or not kicking a variance tree is appropriate. String temperature is one of those. Reprootment of food is another. We also look at bank stability, that's a big one. And those are just examples of some of the eight criteria we look at as we judge the appropriateness of removing trees along a stream. The large woody debris is another common one that's misconstrued with respect to, you know, that string side retention area. Depending on the direction of wind and a number of other things having to do with geomorphology, you will lose some trees in that retention area. Typically, we look towards favoring or denying trees within that grain zone based on prevailing wind. If it looks like the wood is gonna reach the water, it might be counterintuitive to you, but we typically deny that type of tree because we view large woody debris as another important aspect that contributes to the health of that, that stream. There's a number of factors that encourage as far as fish habitat. Hey, some shade could pick up other benefits in a more of a microclimate because of that tree that's tipped into the stream and turned.
I've cut a lot of variance trees in the street and come back a year or two later and half of what's left blown over and it's red.
Yeah, some sites are.
And that's what you consider down woody debris is essential for, for the right here, so.
Structure, in simple terms.
Mike? I've been there in this place in the last fifty years. It's clear as day, doesn't wanna do it. Just screaming and yelling up and down. I understand the private, those private concerns. But there isn't enough consideration of the long term. When I said long term, you're up next. Twenty-five, fifteen, hundred and two hundred years. And some of the, some of the effects that's going on now will be living two hundred years. There's no ice cream, the deer. We're not gonna, we're not gonna see a deer come back like we've seen here before. We're not gonna, we're not gonna see a deer come back like we've seen here before.
We can't blame that all on deforestation or clear cutting though.
Not all, it's not all deforestation. It's also part of the problem, predation is part of the problem. But if you have a, you have a hundred acre field and something happens to that hundred acre field and you lose half of it, you're still trying to, you know, produce some, some kind of a resource from it. You're already fifty percent down. And that's exactly what's happening with our, with our younger, with our stomachs losing. We're losing so much productive habitat capability for producing deer. The secondary effects of predation have been amplified that much longer. And you still have human harvest, which, you know, we all partake. We all do that. I, I do myself. You know, we're, we're facing a situation now where our forest habitat has declined so poorly, so extensively. That it's gonna be in the hundreds of years before we would expect it to reach unknown.
That's all? Thank you, sir.
I have one other question. You, you think the past few people won't violate the current? What's the one? How many people have been prosecuted or how many officers have been prosecuted in all ten years?
With respect to prosecution, I can't give you specifics off the top. It's not a statistic that I, I carry with me. I know I've been in my prison position for approximately four years, I've been in this country since nineteen thirty-seven. Yes, my observation is my review of the files, I took the job prior, I'd reviewed it several times prior to that as well, just out of curiosity, having proximity to the file. Typically, when things were in their heyday around here in private land, we were empowering anyone who was from about three to four violations a year. Not necessarily all from one entity. I can say that we haven't had a violation in the last year. And we did have a violation when I first took the position. So, that's my response to that. It's not something to engage in, in an idle fashion. We're set up to deal with violations much like say the FAA is with respect to aircraft. You know, it's a technical subject. Landowners have given up some of their rights in lieu of that so that their positions are helped heard by people that understand where they're coming from. If I have a forest practices forester that comes to me and shows me an issue that is in the realm of being a violation, is there a forester on the charge of documenting that based on the inspection report? And all the available evidence to me, turn it over to the regional forester who's my boss. That, that regional forester acts as a prosecuting forester. The hearing forester is basically out of the, his complement is the northern region. He's removed with respect to having an interest in what occurs because he's in a separate part of the state. Here's the merits of the prosecution and the defense. The landlord can choose to hire an attorney to represent them or not. And then the, the opposite regional forester that acts as the judge, the hearing officer makes his ruling. And the entity typically agrees or disagrees in a structured setting. They come to a conclusion and fines more often than not lay it on the, the responsible entity. They can appeal that to superior court, but once it goes into the superior court, it's, you know, it's like any operation of that nature. It's an undefined battlefield. So, speak of it in the statutes. The, the other thing that I, I might leave you with with respect to your comment on whether or not, you know, the state cares or doesn't care. I'm gonna stick my neck out here is, you know, we put out public documents about what we do. We have defined periods of time, public can comment on, agencies can comment, municipalities can comment on what we're doing. And that is, you know, a significant opportunity that this body has to weigh in on what they perceive as important with respect to state land. And, you know, I, I would encourage you as a body that if you have a perspective on what's appropriate in a public land, that, that, that's a, we typically put out one to two sales and give them your, we're in the process of doing so, so that there's, there's opportunities that we're.
Well.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
No, we're still over here from the public, Mr. Mayor, until you let me move on.
Anybody else? Mr. Edvill.
Uh, Edvill, Shawnee Corporation. We've submitted opposition for one of the ordinances for the board, for the council's consideration. Thank you.
Questions for Ed? On that?
All right, I had one question. You had asked for more time. Are you asking for like another two weeks next meeting?
Well, because this is, we actually just heard about it the other day. I've only had three or four weeks to respond to this, is why we're asking for a little bit.
So, you're just asking like delay, delaying at one meeting basically?
This is the first reading. This is, you know, it takes two readings. So, it wouldn't even, it won't come up for vote until the next meeting anyway.
I thought it had already been sitting in public comment for a while.
No, this was the first reading.
That's what I was trying, I wanted to clarify. We would.
We're coming for the public. We'll move on. We already discussed that last of the forest practices act, correct?
Yeah, we can move on to reports.
Resolution twenty-one oh nine issuing a tier access permit to seafood producers pool off.
Are you reading from the consent agenda or the hearing from the public?
Yes, sir.
All right, we can discuss those items in earnest, Mr. Mayor, under consideration of resolutions and ordinances.
Now I see it. All right, reports from city officials?
Mr. Mayor, there's a written staff report in the packet. I will ask it, ask it, the council wants to invite brief presentation from the ANX landless group who made, who made for the second meeting in May. Council submitted comments on the legislation that was being considered by Congress last year, which is, which didn't pass. New Congress this year, a new bill likely coming. Yeah, the corporation that represents the ANX, five ANX, potential ANX corporations is prepared to provide information to the council on the, what is likely to be pending congressional legislation coming soon. If the council wants to hear that in person, I can make the arrangements. So, this is not the congressional people? This is the? This is a, this is a consulting firm that represents the five proposed landless corporations.
Mr. Mayor, I, I knew it would be interesting here what they have to say. One of their committee members just called me and I forewarned her, you know, put that shoe on the other foot. How would you feel if you lived on POW? The logging has been happening here for years and years and years and you know, POW is not beyond the area in Alaska. But I would like to hear what they have to say because I, I told her, you're gonna get opposition from almost every entity on POW. So, be prepared. But I would like to hear what they have to say.
Do they want to come in person?
Uh, I think so.
I don't prefer that. I don't like these teleconference things that we can avoid. If these guys want to present their case, they're welcome to show up and do that. But like really says, I believe they're gonna reach, have some very strong opposition.
And I sent them, I sent them the council's comments from last year's legislation. So, they're aware of how the council feels, at least at the time about it. So, maybe if they do come and hear the council views, if those views have been changed, perhaps they would be more likely to search for land elsewhere. That's just a guess.
Yeah, that's fine if they want to come present their stuff.
Okay. Otherwise, we'd be happy to answer questions about the staff report if you're there.
In person, I don't like, the mayor said I don't want one on the phone.
Okay, agreed.
Do you have any opinions, Joe?
No, sir.
City clerk?
Actually, I did want to just comment on one thing of the county on this report. This group, you know, we need to acknowledge the city Craig, many other counties, state of Alaska, and the congressional delegation and district groups are really pushing back on the whole compact soil critical habitat rule down to the tourist weather and any other issues. And it was effective. But thank you and, you know, thanks to everybody that signed up to be there for the report.
But they did implement the act anyway.
They implemented it, but not, not for southeast.
Not yet.
I think we covered it as well.
Yeah, so you. Yeah, done well, John. Any more questions for the treasurer?
Hey, you've been going good. Yesterday, I probably didn't do, well, I know I didn't just get a song, whatever it is there, but we're doing good. Next one, the city will be, um, the at four thirty. So, it looks like right now we're still on schedule, be able to get our pushback back next month.
Water manager.
I could run out of written report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Is Chris open yet?
Oh, yeah. Matter, matter of fact, his first day back, you know, he got to be in the building two hours and we ended up having to run the baby out to the clinic. And I was like, sorry, but I gotta go. And it was nice because, you know, I didn't have to worry about it.
Yep. Any questions for? One? Moving on. Thanks. Jessica, city clerk?
To iterate, reiterate, or actually identify, um, we're doing in the middle of the spring cleanup week. Public Works has been moving right along and getting everyone's garbage fixed up as much as possible. And we had a lot of interest, a lot of signups. Sean Seed, I believe, actually ran contests to help spark interest and that really seemed to, to work. And the next Craig City Council meeting would be May twentieth, twenty twenty-one, if we're on schedule.
I think I'll probably be at the high school scholarship awards dinner that night, not dinner, presentation thing. I've got two graduating this year. So, I'd have a fall beer for that. On the twentieth. The twentieth is the scholarship awards and the twenty-first is graduation.
Okay. So, do you mind wondering if that was misprint in the, what is it called, the Ireland code?
It said twenty-one and twenty-one. Yeah, it's twentieth and twenty-first. Twentieth is for the scholarships. That's a very small invite only. And then it's six per kid in the gym for the graduation.
Okay, I have to do a presentation presenting me for scholarships.
Are we wanting to reschedule or what would you like to do?
First speaking on the order, it's probably not for the budget, probably not, or will we be?
Might be for the budget. I'm not as sure about the utility really. Usually moving together.
Right.
It's more likely we'll leave it so first meeting, that first meeting, kind of the last possible date for scheduled meetings, make it work. But yes, we can pilot for that meeting.
Could we look at the agenda and play it by year for the next meeting?
Sure, everything's set to begin anyway.
Yeah, just rule this night and use till before.
Yeah.
Let's see if Anna can make it. She will or not.
The next meeting date after that will be June. So, Jim, what time does it start? Because I, I know it's gonna be sweet and short.
Are you sure about that? That scholarship presentation, that's how they moved it to different days because it would drag on for so long.
Well, that's one I can, there, there was only a handful of people there. It was disgusting. I was very disappointed. It didn't last very long.
Yeah. Well, I know they sent it to me today, but it was under a Facebook thing, so.
We'll shoot for a regular meeting date and time. And it, it turns out that if we need to slightly adjust our start time, that's meaning we can do that.
Right, that's true. It may be like five thirty or six o'clock. It may be early enough that we can still do the meeting, so.
We'll fob up on the timing.
Yeah, I can't remember what we're timing.
Play it by ear then, will it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. City planner?
Somebody have written a report. The only thing I'm gonna add to it, a little bit of good news on the COVID front. It looks likely that the FDA will approve the Pfizer vaccine for twelve to fifteen year olds in the next couple of days. Folks that are anticipating sending some kids vaccinated as early as next week. That will definitely increase the overall vaccination rate and move this closer to you have to answer any questions?
You know where they stopped? The Johnson and Johnson one?
There was some concerns about some blood clotting issues. They have resumed issuing the Johnson and Johnson. They're giving a warning now. It's, um, more serious side effect of the vaccine, but it's still very rare in its occurrences. But they stopped temporarily out of the bludgeon of caution and did some more study and have started. And did some more study and have started distributing it again.
That's not the one they're offering to younger kids or?
No, no, the only one right now that is likely to be, uh, approved in the very near future is Pfizer vaccine, which is already approved. Actually, it's the one that's already approved for down to sixteen-year-olds as well, so they have a large study group around the country of folks, uh, at least down to sixteen years old, plus the group that they've been using. The test for twelve, fifteen-year-olds.
The Johnson and Johnson, they wanted to better identify the patients to avoid, basically, better figure out which population is at a higher risk and not give it to that population.
Right.
Eighteen to forty-eight, right?
Yeah.
What's the difference between the two vaccines? Why did they come out with two? Like.
There's three different ones.
Three, but you get two, right? And then the one that you get just.
You just get the one, yeah, the one that the Johnson and Johnson one has lower overall efficacy, but it has a broader, it's supposed to be more resilient against the variants. And it's one shot, which in developing countries will be a big deal.
And then Brian on the Craig Harbor project, I know that, uh. You guys have some sketches and stuff. I know that there's been debates about, um. When we get to the buildings down there, like if we want to preserve that, try to preserve them or not, but I know that they're starting to get in pretty bad shape. I was wondering if you guys have considered possibly removing some things that are inside the buildings and possibly doing auctioning them off or something? Or maybe if we have the salmon social again to bring more money towards the project. I know that I've had a lot of members throughout the community talk about just even the office sign outside. And I know that there's things inside that a lot of people that are into antiquing and things would be willing to possibly, um, do auctions for.
Once the council gives us direction to auction items off, I don't intend to do anything like that.
Okay. Something to bring to light, I feel like it's. I hope it just doesn't get all bulldozed down at one point, you know, and rebuilt just because it had to sit there for so long.
There's an agenda, and a little bit later, we can talk about that, you know.
Okay.
For sure.
Moving on, EMS coordinator, fire. You out there, man? He submitted a written.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, by on a call. Just kidding, I don't know that.
I have one comment, you. There were twenty-five calls and sixty-nine EMS responders, maybe you can answer that, from these sixty-nine different responders, or is that sixty-nine added up? From the twenty-five calls, you had sixty-nine people respond over to those calls.
It's no matter.
Okay.
Yeah.
How many different people do you have active right now that are responding to you?
Uh. I'm not sure exactly, I want to know if there is, but I know we have, uh, at least ten.
It's improved badly than last year.
Oh, yeah. I'm asking, uh, she has schedules worked out for people that are on call on certain days. And take the calls, and if they don't, then somebody fills in. There hasn't been a shortage of people showing up on calls.
So that's good, if they're all intact on her behalf and certain on their behalf, there would be a real challenge for us, or crazy, see, there, as we speak.
We've had a pretty good response to fire two individuals, we can get to them. See, the fire was kind of tricky, not into the phone, was running through the seven rafters. Seals weren't.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was a tricky fire. Got into that spray foam stuff. The rafters, and we couldn't get to it between two ceilings.
Yeah.
Very difficult. Moving on, Harbor Master?
Mister Mayor, I've submitted a written report, um, would also like to add that we are actually currently shut down at the ice house. We probably have four or five more hours of work tomorrow, and then we'll start. Getting the rest of the ice out and bringing the rest, bringing the ice bin down to temperature and then making ice again, so, um, be happy to answer any questions that anyone might.
No questions, I can see, Hans, thank you. Library?
Angela's excuse tonight, Mister Mayor, she's on.
We've all seen her report in there.
Yeah, and I sent out an email. She really, it seems like she really used her COVID time well. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to go down there, but I can't believe that it's the same, you would think she somehow added square footage to the library, like I can't. Believe the difference she made, and I had three kids aged three to nine there, and they just had the time of their lives, like they keep asking, that you'd think it was Disney World, when we come back to the library, so. She really did a good job.
That's good. It's got to go in, or you're gonna keep thinking they're locked up because of COVID stuff.
Yeah, and you know, we were in there, I was there with my three, and there were two other groups there, but we were nowhere near each other. Like one guy was at the computer, another person was in the adult book section, me and my kids were in the children's section. You know, it it's for a small area, it's easy to stay in groups.
Hey, RJ, Lucy?
Submitted a report, if you have any questions.
Questions for RJ?
That's good.
Been busy?
Uh, too busy for this time of the year.
Yeah.
I mean, I just, I almost had the jail emptied out. We were down to one inmate and in a short span of about twenty-eight hours, we backed up to about eight, eight or nine. Pretty broad in the last night.
Yeah.
Done funny.
It was Cinco de Mayo.
Was it?
Yeah.
Hey, Public Works?
Submitted a written report. More than half the answer questions might have. Turn to that for us.
Question for Russell? Recreation?
Good evening. I did submit a report, but I have a couple of things to add. Uh, one is, uh, Miranda Com is working for me now. She's actually a volleyball registering people. We are going to have a blessing with the sweep. I'd like you guys to promote that. It'll be on Memorial Weekend, May thirtieth at four P M at the city dock. And my other exciting news is we have a donated arcade machine that is like a fancy computer connected to the internet, that you can connect to the internet. You can do anything from, uh, pinball to asteroids, that you could just congratulate on that, so the kids are gonna love that. And that was a donation from, uh, someone who wants to remain anonymous, but it was a very generous and kind thing and not related to my job at, um, city, but. The roof and power vehicles looking good. So, any questions?
No. Thank you, Victoria.
Thank you.
Parks and public facilities.
Hello, this is Doug. I submitted a written report, if you have any questions, Doug.
No questions for Doug?
No, it's probably trail work is nice to see, and a lot of people that walk appreciate it.
Yeah.
We've got a lot of positive comments on your trail work.
Yeah, I I have two. And we appreciate your help at ballet. Are you gonna start coming every Tuesday?
At where?
At ballet.
She has a tutu for you.
We'll just sign him up.
I can't hear her on the phone.
Don't worry about it, we'll tell you later.
No convenience.
Tell me later, tell me tomorrow. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Reading and correspondence. Didn't read all that stuff?
I had a question. Do we normally, and I I probably should know this, it's like my fourth year here, but the scholarship fund, do we normally contribute to that?
I'm pretty sure we did last year, like two thousand dollars.
I have no recollection. Do you know, John?
I don't recall it being a regular contribution, but. We may have contributed from time to time.
When we were having the graduation party thing, and they were looking for that money, we used to contribute it. I don't think we really had it for the.
Scholarship.
That school fund.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, I would look at the calendar, you know, uh, Michael Zillo's, you know, suggested the person's the next to either. But if we have more responsibility, I'll say, you know. If you get an idea, I think the. And that would, that would further, you know, we talk first, or Public Works. You know, get a feel for how they see something like that would be, uh, utilized and. There's other things that would go with it, and obviously could be a bigger one. You can have to, you know, be able to move it. Reasonably.
Anna Cracker, Christine, yeah.
Solid, solid desire, five, five yard dump truck, is it big enough? I mean, there's a lot of considerations, right? I think it's something that's worth considering, and I'd be, I'd like to, you know, just see a little more of the feedback from, uh, Public Works and. Or stuff that accounts, something like that would be utilized. What the kind of secondary needs would be.
It's in the budget, I believe. Millie, isn't this what we were talking about in the budget, the excavator?
Yeah.
Next year's budget.
Yeah.
Next year.
Twenty twenty-two.
Uh, he was just saying that he thinks that we should purchase an excavator for the city because of the landslides and things out, seeing it.
Do you think that would be warranted versus leasing it written? Entirely, we get.
Yeah, but, you know, I think what we're asking for is that. There's a lot of different, they're excavators, and that's what we're asking for. If the budget was more of a top end mini excavator. Um, you know, with a mulching head on that thing, so that's a little bit different than, you know, a one-twenty.
You're not gonna be moving any logs.
Well, not with the smaller one.
That's true.
But I mean, it all depends on what kind of work you're, you're wanting us to do, um, and to what extent, um, you want us to do that work.
So the smaller, when you move with the dump truck and then the flatbed trailer, we already possess, correct?
We actually have a new trailer on its way, but, yeah.
Anything else that I need to discuss?
I'm gonna, uh. Definitely should do that, you know. You know, limits of raising funding for scholarships and stuff like that. You know, and, you know, we haven't seen, seen a, you know, money coming to us. You know, the cold money for our support. You know, I think there's probably, there's some way we could do this, because within our problem.
Yes, the council would like to motion to provide funding to the scholarship fund, staff will make it work. Um, sure, that'd be fine.
Anything else? They will move on. Consideration of resolution to ordinances, resolution twenty-one oh nine, which means a two-year access permit to seafood producers cooperative. Is this what it's named, perhaps what we did last year on this case?
That's what's proposed, yes.
Mister Mayor, I'm moved to adopt resolution twenty-one oh nine.
Most have been made and seconded to adopt resolution twenty-one oh nine, issuing a two-year access permit to seafood producers cooperative. Open for discussion.
I have a question. I've got, um, I've seen reference to, if they have been recording. The over, the process can create, can that, can you verify that, uh, one of the.
I haven't requested the data from them, but the agreement is that they'll comply, that we make it available to them.
Is that just now, or that? Context of the change.
It was in, it was in the last access permit as well.
Can we confirm that they're doing, yes? I mean, I'm gonna assume they have, and I can only, I know it's a concern, and I feel as.
I'd be happy to talk to Stephen Rose about that.
Some of their fish gets processed here to Quigley's out there on False Island, so we're getting the fish tanks out of a portion of that, which is helpful. To the city, which I like to see, and that's.
We may, you know, there's reference that they'll document that it's going to be tread processed, which, you know, would be certainly our interest. Um, you know, I know it's sort of lying about right here, not a lot of years ago, and that's trying to hear more and catch them. Uh, they got to where they were doing that, and that actually dealt that wrong, they kept up pretty good for a while. So it it does make noticeable difference, and, you know, we certainly hope that that's the case.
Yeah, I know Quigley's been doing more and more gradually, building up, so.
Do they have an override for our crane? So that they don't have to put a credit card in it when they're using our crane?
I think Honda told me that there's a, there is an override or a disconnect for the time duration that they're using the dock. So if you don't have to use credit cards, pay the flat fee instead.
I think that they use it a lot, five hundred hours for that alone, it seems like a cheap price for as much money as we keep putting into that crane. And we keep buying motors and K-mobles and. They use it a lot. They're, they're loading two boats at a time quite a bit. There's a lot of the guys like to lay on that side rather than.
The outside.
Where their crane is at, because our cranes can reach into the holes of a lot of their boats better than their crane. I don't, I don't know anybody who thinks, I'm the one that pushes to jump them up every year, but. Is that the same price we've been using on the crane fee?
Uh, yeah, the crane fee we added a couple of, few years ago, and it's been set at the same level, I think, since we started charging specifically for that service.
I feel that they're processing fisher kind of offset setting, or ease of train usage, but we can see that it's actually wearing the crane out, and we need to adjust. Possibly the next time it comes up.
Yeah, we can get some figures for next time. I I know we have to have somebody come certify it every couple of years and all those kind of things now, too, and see how much of, those cranes cost us a lot of money. I know we have to replace the motors like more than. Anybody would want, they're spending. I know we have to replace the motors like more than anybody would want, they're spinning motors. Anyway, just, I don't, we can just do it for this one, but.
You guys can look into it in the future, actually.
The whole thing.
Millie Skinnerver?
Yes.
Michael Cameron?
Yes.
Julie McDonald?
Yes.
Chanel McKinley?
Yes.
Jimsey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on, Ed, finish business.
I believe ordinance seven thirty-four and seven thirty-five.
There was it's number seven thirty-four sale of city on the tide and submerged land to rocky.
I thought it would be a good idea to discuss valuation a little bit, when we see that. But, you know, we have some discussion on what we, what the valuation is, and I think it might be, I think we might be generous on that right now. You know, if we do that before the second meeting, then we could be, maybe better understand, or better able, what we, how we will approach that. I personally believe there's your tidings out there, you know, with all the, with all of what's going on, the you know, the nice homes that are out there, the tidings are worth more than part of the being praised or praised for. Significant amount. And we do have the option of, you know, choosing to increase the, the sale price, and, you know, I just wanted to ensure that we, we think about that seriously.
Should we consider lease instead of sale on these tidelands, and that way retain possession of them and not sell them? You still get access to them under a lease?
Um, you know, I'm gonna think about it in terms of property, or you're tough to build a, what probably would be your you know, I can see somebody wanting to own it, I understand that. I'm, I'm thinking in terms of, you know, the value of the land itself, if we choose to, you know, sell it. And then secondly, I, you know, I'd like to offer either Chelsea, the, the president, a little more of their concerns and their issues with this, I know.
What are your concerns, Ed? Do you know yet, or you want?
We'll dig in, get back in on the second one, honestly, we, we were kind of rushed to get this one out, so we wanted to make sure that we, we got it in, so it was recorded, but now that I know it's just the first one, we'll we'll have something a little bit better to submit to the council next, next week.
So I think those are both great discussion points, but I would be comfortable moving with the first reading. And I'm glad we got these two points on the table, go ahead with the first reading.
Someone will need to move, make a motion to approve the first reading.
I moved to approve. Now I lost the ordinance number, seven thirty-four, first reading.
Well, we've been based second to approve resolution seven thirty-four. If you have for sale of the city on tide and submerged lands to rocky. This is a roll call of.
If there's no more discussion, yes.
If there is no discussion.
Millie Skinnerver?
Yes.
Michael Cameron?
Yes.
Julie McDonald?
Yes.
Chanel McKinley?
Yes.
Jimsey?
Yes.
Thank you.
We've been on to resolution seven thirty-five. Selling track F U S S fourteen twenty-nine.
Approved first reading of ordinance seven thirty-five.
Second.
Action been made and seconded to approve the first reading, so of number seven thirty-five, so track F U S S fourteen twenty-nine.
Um, Ed, you guys already got approved for, um, what was it, track E as a residential?
Yes, we have high density residential, we're just going after the whole plat right now, we, we have plans to move our archive shed, which is actually holding records from nineteen twenty. So we're, we're working on consolidating that up to the main office, and then making the whole grade, one grade, so we could get three plats up there instead of just the two. Figure if we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it, right?
Yeah, right.
It's gonna be a lot of dirt moving?
I don't think so, I think that we're gonna move, move a lot of the organics on site to fill what we need, and we're gonna cut the grade down a little bit, and we're gonna stabilize the banks, especially on the street side, because I believe when they went at that, it was a lot of mud that they threw down there, so once we dig into it, we'll know how much we actually have to remove, but we're not anticipating moving a whole lot off of site, which would be nice for the traffic here down.
I remember when Mike Perez was doing quite a bit of work over there for you guys.
Yeah, pretty muddy over there on the side.
Yeah.
Street side, so we're anticipating to get into a little bit of mud, which we might have to remove. There's less than a thousand yards that would probably have to be removed from the street side, which is not a problem.
And are these duplexes gonna be, are you guys gonna be selling them, or are you gonna do rent to own, or just renting?
The corporation plans on retaining ownership
Okay.
of the land and, and the, uh, and the housing, the, the anticipation is to provide a higher income housing for more professional grade workers that are going to be coming to the island. Search has got a big facility opening up here pretty soon, and, you know, just for the needs of our community, we need more professional grade workers here that provide services that people need, so we don't have to go off island so much.
So it'll technically stay commercial, right, because you guys will be renting, but.
Yeah, there's, it's, I'm not exactly sure exactly how it shakes down, maybe John could explain a little bit more, but I believe the trailer park is set up in, kind of in the same manner, because it provides housing, but it is in a commercial setting, so it's, I believe, similar.
Is there any in the Chelsea trailer court?
Well, with the, the way that it works out, with being, well, I think it's gonna be zone medium density residential.
Right over here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's on for, are you doing, right?
High density. But I think her question was, it's, it's still being used in a commercial capacity.
Right, it, it may have rentals on it, but like other rental properties, apartments, it's, they're gone on residential property.
Is there any question on that? So if it is changed to high density residential, and the intent is to put duplexes on two different lots, which would probably be zone. Are the size of the lots, do they limit how many, um, blocks to be put in one, is it the maximum?
No, I think three would be the maximum number of dwelling units in a single block structure based on the size, I don't have the, I don't recall a lot, lot sizes, off the top of my head, but I think they're all about ten thousand square feet, which would allow, or tri, up to triflexes, as long as, as long as the development could meet all of the parking and other standards that are required. But they're larger than what is necessary for duplexes on each of the three lots.
And, and that's actually to provide parking in front as well, so we're not taking up street parking. They're also gonna be provided with garage. Both story, yeah, there you go. We've got some more storage.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve first reading of ordinance seven thirty-five.
Yeah, but I think Chanel already. We're in discussion.
Is there any more discussion on this? This point?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Millie Skinnerver?
Yes.
Michael Cameron?
Yes.
Julie McDonald?
Yes.
Chanel McKinley?
Yes.
Jimsey?
Yes.
Thank you.
That bait on the downtown harbor truck, Ed. You got it, Brian, gone.
That was my mental system here, so it provides you, you know, several things going along, across, along, uh, different tracks, financing, committee, design work for the corps. Try to describe them in the in the memorandum, giving an idea, like I said, that what staff is working on simultaneously here. Council has questions about any of those, whether it's the, again, the financing, the design work, the court procurement, the other public process, that we have to answer questions, and just to Chanel's earlier point, the memo does include a reference to appropriation that's in the draft budget for the coming fiscal year. Fifty thousand dollars for costs to, related to planning development of the Henry site, both in regards to access to harbor, for example, and in regard to what should be done with the buildings, have a layoff streets, utilities. I think it's likely that process will cost more than fifty thousand in the long run, but it provides a forum for the public participate, and ultimately give advice to the council on how to move ahead with the development of the property.
I just know some of those, the foundation and some of those buildings are pretty they're getting pretty worn.
Yes.
Not as salvageable as they used to be.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Under, uh, historical artifacts, I would like to see the local tribe add to that, because that is where our village started, and that's the, the tribe's historical land.
And we have met with the tribe on that matter, formally with the State of Alaska Office of the Store Preservation and the Army Corps. The intention is to through a written agreement, incorporate all of those parties' interests into any art, cultural artifacts that might be found. And again, that will be documented, that's subject to council approval before it goes into.
We've got two agreements really that we're working on, one is, we have to enter into an agreement with the Corps of Engineers and the State Historic Preservation Office in relation to the construction project, the breakwater construction project. Uh, one of the items that we have included in the draft memorandum with the Corps of Engineers, which I'm kind of still going through, is that we will draft a separate memorandum of agreement with the tribe related specific to cultural articles that are recovered during any construction.
I have one more question, forgot on a, on a consideration of design and buildings and all things such, when would you anticipate that those kinds of discussions could be initiated, would occur?
Uh, I would, and it sorry, I'm standing, it'll be this fall, that's what I expect, I will ask Brian to initiate a process for the planning commission to take input, like most things of this caliber, it's probably best started in earnest, after the, I have an efficiency.
And just as a reminder, the, the planning commission spent most of about a year working on some recommendations for the council, the general, they're very general in nature, not specific down to the buildings necessarily, but the council did approve, and I started, I don't remember when, last year, sometime, I think, that the council approved those recommendations, so that's kind of the general springboard for the discussion, there's already been a lot of discussion about the importance of the buildings and and what the planning commission and, and some members of the public would ultimately like to see on the canary site, so I'll pull those recommendations up that the council has already reviewed and approved and send those up, too, that's a good starting point for a lot of the discussions.
And I think some of the funding, whatever is appropriate, will help be spent on some kind of an analysis of the buildings.
Right.
Recommendation by someone who's worked in that capacity before, to say these buildings have potential for this, or they don't, or come up with recommendations for the decision makers to take into account.
We might want to let Victoria know she's not muted.
Victoria? Victoria? Um, is that you visiting with folks in the background? Okay, please mute, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I know at one point in time, there was a fairly good sized committee, what was that committee called? Was it Henry Property?
Historical Society?
No, there was a specific committee about this harbor project, yeah.
And they helped develop those recommendations
Right.
for the planning commission, that ultimately went to council for approval.
I think it was them, planning commission, us.
Ralph was involved with that, we have, yeah.
I was involved too, yes, okay.
Good.
I'm good.
That direction? Cool. Generation of appropriation of the garbage truck.
Memorandum to pack it on this item, Russell and I, who, Russell and I are working together on this. Happy to answer questions with regard to the three scenarios in our recommendation.
Um, do you guys have somebody in mind that would repair the truck? Is it on island, or would you have to ship it off?
We used to have the repairs, there's nobody here on the island that would do that.
Would they, so would you fly somebody in, or would you have to ship the truck off?
No, you, our, we could not fly anybody in, because we do not have equipment in the shop, you know, there's difference between standard maintenance and then starting to refabricate, you know, having to equip that, and we're not set up for, for any equipment refurbishment or fabrication, so I couldn't really have anybody come in and fly in. I mean, you don't wanna hit council on money just to ship something like that off island.
Right.
And, and it's a very specific item, it's not something that's And, and it's a very specific item, it's not something that's. Along with the chassis, it's, it's the body, um, so. It would have to not just be shipped, it could be shipped, I guess, to maybe catch can or someplace like that, I mean, with the shop it's got. But here's the issue is, is that that's a two thousand and one, it's two thousand and twenty one. We've got, that, that thing has gotten a good life, uh, and you're now, uh, talking about, I think, a little over eight thousand dollars just in parts. Here's the issue is to say, being twenty twenty one, and it was a two thousand and one, you're, you're well beyond. Even getting your, your salvage value, you know, out of this thing. You, you wouldn't get eight thousand dollars in salvage value out of that truck. And it's, it's at an age now where, yeah, we could do whatever we needed to repair that back end, but. Uh, this has been a vehicle that, uh, over the last three years, we've been put a lot of money into. We've had to replace, you know, fuel tanks and. Big oil farms and. All kinds of things, so, uh. I am hesitant to have to pay, you know, eight to ten thousand dollars, uh, just in repair parts, that's not including labor if you had somebody specific. Uh, and it's not about a person who's able to do the work, it's about, you know, how to find the facility to do the work.
Right.
You're looking at probably. About half of that just in labor as well, plus your shipping costs, which I think would probably be anywhere from three thousand to five thousand dollars to. Have it shipped if, if there's no new catch can, they just, you know. You know, you're, it's, I mean, it's. Major renovation for that, that back end.
Right, and then if, if we did go with option one, with it getting renovated and shipped off, how long do you think it would last after it being repaired?
I'll be honest with you, it will not last long.
Did we purchase it in two thousand and one or when did we per- okay?
Brand new?
Yes.
I felt like we bought it sooner, but I'm, I'm probably getting my vehicles confused.
We bought the, the new one, side load.
Oh, that's the one I'm thinking of, that one was like four years ago, right?
In two thousand fifteen.
Fifteen, oh, it was longer than I thought.
So it's already six years old, the miss, this lifespan is almost expired.
I think you have kids and time just like accelerates. Alright, anyways.
So that new truck is approaching its end of its life also.
Oh, I don't see that.
And you guys also use the, the older, um, truck for spring cleanup and stuff, you don't use the side loader, correct?
Right, I mean. Yeah, it, there's, there's a lot of value to a rear load, uh, box truck is what they're called.
Okay.
Um, especially during cleanup, uh, spring cleanup, uh.
That's what.
In your pickup, just limbs and wood or. Cops on the side of the road. You know, instead of. Instead of having two guys with two separate pieces of equipment, you know, so we pick that up, you know, just picks that box up.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that the council select an option from those listed above. And appropriate submission funds to implement, um, selection. And the staff recommends option two.
Do we have to pick A or B or leave it up to staff discretion, based on which is more financially?
Based on Millie's comment, it sounds like the, it would be direction to pursue option two, is that fair enough?
Yeah, she said option two, but I don't know if you needed A or B for funding, or can you, is that discretionary?
Um, I would recommend the council include a dollar amount.
Um. But as far as using the endowment fund or the reserve funding?
Um, if the council has a preference, it should voice the preference now, otherwise, I think I would not have been there, I would recommend to kick it from the, uh, equipment reserve fund.
Okay. So Millie, do you wanna add a, an amount in the funding source?
Oh, okay, I thought we were just getting this on the floor and then discussing the annual, but sure.
I think that is what's happening. Julie just suggesting the mo- motion be modified to include a, a specific dollar amount in a source of funds.
Okay, so that's the fifty five thousand, two hundred and twenty two?
Hundred and fifty six thousand.
Right.
Forty six.
Yeah. Yeah.
There are choices here, if the council wants to receive a rush to, not to deliver this, but can be purchased outright, if the council wants to prepare to cash, it can be purchased over time. At the fifty five thousand.
And three percent.
Dollar now, yeah.
I would do the fifty, I mean, three point oh five percent is pretty good, so. Yeah. So, if you wanted to do that, your amount would be fifty five thousand, two hundred and twenty two out of the capital project equipment reserve.
Yes.
Good for me.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll second.
Well, just in vague and seconded to select option two.
Uh, and I have one question left, and Russ, I need to get over to your department, I keep failing to do so. Um, but how, how are the current dump trucks now stored, are they under covered storage of some kind?
The dump trucks?
Yeah.
Need the garbage trucks?
Yeah.
Garbage.
Oh, I said dump, didn't I, sorry, garbage.
The dump trucks are in the, um, equipment, uh, sheds. Both vehicles.
The dump and the garbage are under the?
Both garbage trucks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, and they're, they're under cover.
Okay. So this would be undercover as well then, right, we'd be replacing the one with the other?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, and I know that unfortunately, you get a lot of corrosives put into the garbage that you then put into those things, do we wash those trucks out at least once a week with, uh?
Uh, those fresh waters on average are, you know, washed down once a week, I mean, just because of the, you know, council trash and, and keeping the nuisance, uh. Keep nuisance down, smell down.
They are being hosed down once a week.
On, I would say on general, I don't check it every week, but I would say, I've seen that they're on average every week.
I'm sure if there's a week with landslides, it may not happen that week, but most, most times.
The issue is, is more the age of the vehicle, not necessarily the process.
Okay.
Any more discussion on this?
Kind of thoughts on this? You know, we've got to face the work ourselves with, well, we have a dual battery system. There were seven trucks, or we had, we had the existing side load truck, you know, and, and kind of, you know, we. You know, theoretically, we should be replacing it, not too many years, so there's gonna be another, how do you test your, kind of, uh. Like, you know, I'm a little bit concerned about the. And I was talking, like, there's good as any decisions, but we're working ourselves into a dual system here, right? A lot of money for small community, we really do have completely, completely different garbage systems.
Russ, if, if I might, you know, to shed, shed a little bit of light on that.
You do have your trailer parks, which are, you know, a different type of entity that under our codes and under our ordinances. They're, they're a commercial entity, and so, uh, they, um. Require some kind of bear proof in the system, um, you know, so that's, that's. Where we were at in that, in that process as far as not trying to create a dual pickup system, but to. And, you know, adequately address that, that bear issue. And I know that there's been lots of discussions and lots of opinions on individual, you know, cans within that trailer park, but here's the issue is. It, you have to be sensitive to your ordinances and then the billing process too. And, and how you would bill, try and see. Versus individual cans versus the way that it's set up to the ordinances at this time, and so that's why. Uh, those, uh, bear proof cans were, were one of the best options that, that was given to you at that time. To deal with the bear issue and to address, um, community, uh, dump sites within the trailer park.
And it has a baited the Irish, or the bear issue in John C, the bears moved into town there, so.
Well, I'm, I'm, I understand, but I was here with all, most of the comments, whether you're. You know, like, that's one of my questions to you, um. Very garden, these, even coming close to. Thanks, awesome, so. But, I'm sorry, you know, the rotation on trucks of, in theory, probably every ten years.
Well, you also have to think about that this new truck, the back loading one, isn't gonna be as, used as much as it used to be used. Where it used to go around every all town and pick up all the trash, where now it's just. Being used for our bear dumpsters, which we need because we have bears on the island and those aren't gonna go away anytime soon, I mean. That has to do with clear cutting as well.
Russell, have you looked into the, uh, one that could pick up your bear group dumpsters and dump them over the top from the front?
A front load?
Yeah.
Uh.
Also, it could be a side loader too.
Did you make a front load with side load combination?
That is something that I think we should consider, uh, because of the fact that we have the bear dumpsters, our truck is starting to. At six years old, it's gonna start having issues pretty soon.
Yeah, um, right now, those, those, uh. Bear proof dumpsters not designed for front loader, uh, they're designed for rear load.
That you could modify them, correct, from what I understand?
You, you can, you'd have to, you'd wind up, but I, I think there would be a way to maybe modify that. You have to weld some. Split, you can stock, steel stock on the sides.
What is?
Run into it to the front.
Yeah, what's the cost difference on that combination side loader, front loader versus the one you have listed here?
Uh, we don't.
We don't know yet.
It's hard for me to say because it all comes down to cubic yard capacity, what your, you know. Single axle versus dual axle and that kind of thing, so I mean.
We also have to keep it down to a size that our city streets can manage also, not a dual.
You know, this particular unit is a sixteen yard, you know, unit, and so. I think that's about your average size. So with the size of the combination, you're probably looking at. Two fifty two eighty. Two hundred and fifty, probably two hundred and eighty.
Something we need to consider, council, they have a dual purpose truck. To serve. As a side loader and as a bear proof dumpster truck, so.
But if that's gonna be two eighty and this truck's one fifty. I mean, at least if, we've got the two trucks now on kind of a rotation, one's six years, seven years old, one's gonna be brand new. So, you know what I mean, like, if we spend two eighty and have the one truck and it goes down, we're in a big mess, where now we got the two trucks and one goes down, at least we kind of have the other, or it could figure something out, am I correct in thinking this, Rusty? Is there, cause the cost difference doesn't seem that high between having the two and having the one that does both functionality.
Well. I think the issue here is, is that, yeah, you know, your side load truck, uh. It's a specialty item that we want in two thousand and fifteen, you know, we spent, I think we put more money in the budget this last year. But we spent, I think, thirteen thousand dollars, uh, on it this year, just to have the, um. Uh, emission system worked on.
That's true.
About twenty six codes, and we were told that it could stop in mid, mid process at any time, and so. Uh, you know, the issue is, is the problem that you have here is, is that you don't accumulate enough hours on those pieces of equipment, but yet they. So, to, to us, it seems like they'll last forever, but they, but they really don't, and so, um. You gotta look at starting to replace your pieces of equipment around a ten year, ten year long.
And I didn't factor in maintenance, when I was saying the price difference, I didn't think about the maintenance too.
Well, also with this back loader, if the side loader ever did break down, we could still use the back loader. And go back to the old system of them.
And that's what I was trying to point out with the two trucks, with them kind of alternating, it does give us an advantage.
I know that Kessan, their dump truck broke down and they're having to use this brand new truck to just. Throw trash in and haul it down instead of actually using their dump truck, so.
Yeah.
It's always good to have. One that you can go back to an old system where if we did a front loader and a side loader, then if that truck. Broke down or one of the hydraulics on the arm broke, we could have our garbage. People throwing it up into the truck.
Yeah.
Because it's up top instead of in the back, where you can manually do it.
To Mike's point, it is a lot of machinery for a town this size. That is a valid point.
It is, but we're working on growing our community, not downsizing, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought on this, is that, you know, Chris brought up a good point, or Mary brought up a good point, you know, if we had to do a purpose truck. That would be the first leg of getting back to a one system. Operation, because then. If we do replace the existing side loader, say in another five years, can we replace it with a similar type truck? Then we have a one system operation, then we have a backup, and looking long term, that to me. Could, you know, I could, I. Looking, oh, I think that's a very, uh.
I guess I'm not following, because if the dual purpose truck is two eighty. And it's one fifty five for the two other trucks. You're not really saving that much.
Right, when, when the side loader breaks down, that one was well over two hundred to start with, wasn't it?
Oh, what, what was the side loader cost?
I, I, I wasn't hearing about this purchase.
If you guess, is it, is it more expensive than this one?
It was over, it was between two hundred and two hundred and fifty.
Oh, okay, alright, then nevermind, I was thinking they were both about one fifty five.
And then you're talking about having two trucks, one that dumps over the back.
Okay.
Which is a hundred and fifty thousand, then you got a two hundred and fifty thousand side loader.
Okay.
Four hundred and fifty thousand.
Now, now I see your point, yeah.
But the good one about the back loader is that you can do it manually, you don't have to have the hydraulics to lift up our trash cans.
The, the, the front motor, uh, side loader combination has a back option also, that opens up.
It, it might, it was all.
They make all types of combinations, but that's what we would want, something that has the versatility. Because in, in, in essence, what you're buying now is a replacement for the side loader that we currently have. That is operational, but is in its final years of operation.
Right.
Phasing out the old box truck. Completely, and so we're good to accommodate the bear dumpsters. We have to maintain or, or keep a, a box truck available, which if we have this front loader. Combination side loader, it would serve those purposes.
Right, if they can successfully alter the bear dumpsters, correct?
Like I told that they can, so.
And find a model that's single axle and has, has, we need, there's a lot of variables here.
There is.
And those dumpsters may not be the right width, uh, even.
Yeah.
How do those hydraulic arms do on like gravel roads and stuff, I know that we don't have any here, but I know that. There, in the past, there has been talk of Saint Nick becoming city property or not, and so we should look into the future about if it did. And the city having brought their own the trucks, how those. How those hydraulic arms would do on the gravel part of the roads or potholes.
It's been discussed somewhat that if we did do something like that, that uh if the road wasn't paved, we would put the dumpsters at the end of the pavement and not have individuals beyond that because that way it would destroy the truck. Out on the dirt road.
Would we have to change our orient, ordinance?
Well, we don't have it or not.
I know, I know, but I'm just saying that it's good to look into the future when you're talking about such a big purchase.
Service, you're just telling them they have to dump it at the end of the road.
Those people don't want us. I don't think we have to worry about that anytime in in the twenty or thirty years.
So Tim, are you are you suggesting we look into the dual purpose truck before we make the final decision on this truck?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's good to have a lot of information.
It's a big purchase to be worth looking into. Rusty, would you be comfortable with waiting two weeks and getting back to us on comparing the dual purpose, the pros and cons beyond finances?
Well, I mean, the only issue is is we put a Band-Aid together on the current machine. It could break at any time.
The other option we have seen tell it's not the bad bear season is we have enough ground cans that we could do Sean C with the side load truck for a while.
We could.
Technically, I mean, we have lots of those cans, I believe.
And we still have them.
I mean, this is not prime, they're coming out to eat, but it's grass time for them. It's not like it would cause a huge problem in the next two months to have those other cans back because they're already used to not having them. And we could live for a couple of months with those, but we have to be ready to go by July or August, for certain with the bear dumpsters.
Well, folks, I mean, we're not gonna even meet that deadline because even with a chassis and a box sitting on the ground in Georgia, you're still looking at sixty days just to build it.
Wow.
So you're you're looking at sixty to ninety days just to build something that's available on the ground if they have to order it. Then they and then it'll take more time. So that's fine, I'm I'm willing to do it, it just realizes that we can swap those cans out and do whatever, but um you know, once that, we've we've put the Band-Aid on there, it's where once something breaks on that, that's probably all we can do.
I still, I think two weeks isn't gonna break us one way or another. We need to think about Tim's idea.
But is it gonna be two weeks or is it gonna be pushed again because you and Millie have the?
Well, yeah, that that Charles your dinner is at six thirty.
Yeah.
But the thing is, there's four four other people, but you have a meeting. And technically, if you need somebody to call in while we're sitting there so that you can get the quorum going, somebody can do it from there.
Okay.
If need be, we can do that meeting.
I would be comfortable pushing it for two weeks as long as we're gearing, as long as we're sure we find some way to make this happen in two weeks. It isn't going.
Uh, I will start working on it right away, but two weeks may not be enough um
Oh.
To get a quote from a vendor. We went through um a source well program, which is a government entity that does the solicitation so that we didn't have to do the solicitation ourselves. It's it's an approved system. So um even waiting for for a quote and putting everything, all those little details together that type of per unit, you know, I I think it took us about a month to 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 complete the quote.
Wow.
So I'm not necessarily asking for major decision here, I'm just giving you the information.
No, it's all good information to have. Yeah, no, it's good information.
I know, I feel comfortable voting.
You know, of course, it was not our recommendation, but the other, you have that other option as well with the Kodiak cans that are fully automated, bear proof, ninety-six gallon can for the side load truck.
Which would require surveying every individual transition space in the trailer park.
And another thirty-five thousand dollars to buy them, but we just spent thirty-five thousand on bear dumpsters.
But you'd have your one truck then. Just saying.
Yeah.
Bear dumpsters are better, though, for Sean C, you know, they they seem to work. We don't seem to see a mess over there. I'm assuming that uh that would you say that's accurate? That their dumpsters have actually been very effective at reducing the problem?
Yeah, absolutely. It's not that they perceived any of them on Edville and and that was very positive. Um, I believe that the bear, those particular dumpsters, you know, have accomplished what we want. One was reducing the litter and and the the visions there and and of course um helping everybody out. I mean, they and reducing bear activity.
They'll reduce it each year now.
Well, it reduces it apart, but push, we had to put three bears down.
In town.
Sure, because they actually left Sean C there. I've came into, we have one on our DT Rob's residence down there on beach. We have one that was went by the the church by Ralph G. Mark. And they were getting very aggressive.
And a Thomas, I wanted my street too.
Yeah. And they were going as far as one of the forches, they're actually pushing on the doors. But I mean, we're gonna have a bear problem over the other.
Yeah. And a half.
And I I think you're right, two weeks isn't it, it is gonna make your birthday. I just wanted you to be aware. You know, this isn't something that we can just order and, you know, it's here within a a month period and we're looking at, you know, three to six months.
You can't just go on Amazon? Can't just Amazon prime it?
Amazon shipping about as slow as.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. Good point.
So you'll reserve that as?
I can and and uh I will let John know if uh we get a quote uh back within that two week timeframe and see if we can get it on to the agenda.
Is that right, with counsel?
Right, and even if you can get a ballpark it might help us so that we can get money for operations. And then do a final thing at the end and if that would help make it happen quicker.
So do we need to table?
Motion for.
Yeah. There's a motion to approve it on the floor with a second.
So do we table this or?
Can we move the table, drop the motion and move the table either one?
I'm gonna withdraw.
Perfect.
So we'll put this back on the schedule in two weeks.
Yeah, thank you, Rust.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If the council doesn't plan to revisit the Forest Practices Act, I don't know, it was under unfinished business. Uh, we could let his privacy grant know.
I don't know, I think he's really enjoying this bear dumpster conversation.
Yeah.
Fascinating.
You did a really good job. I'm sure brought it up, but you shouldn't excuse me. Yeah, I really appreciate you being there. I I learned a lot and the information you sent down that I read, I learned a lot. And I hope you didn't take any of my comments personally, like you guys all do a good job. You didn't write the law, none of that stuff. You're doing what you're supposed to do and we appreciate that, okay? I hope you don't realize, I I I didn't mean, nothing that I said was about you whatsoever. You know, we appreciate having somebody being the steward of the timber. And I I think that the legislature people may have not been the best job they could have written the laws and the regulations, but that's, you're you're doing what you're supposed to do and we appreciate that.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
I'm ready to move on, fading fast.
Yeah.
Well, we're voting on this one next week, right?
Yeah.
No, the um the budget for the school.
In that period.
Oh.
Now we're at the.
Oh, that's, okay. Uh, can I go ahead and move to accept? Move to accept Ms. Gail Slants, I'm saying that wrong, Ms. Isaac, Ms. Farrell's untimely senior property tax exemption applications.
One good name exactly to accept the late files, senior property tax exemption and applications for Slips and Isaac's Farrell. Discussion on this.
I do have a question. I I we put a very nice notice in everybody's taxing that there's a thing and for people to say they're not notified just ticks me off. I've got a real nice notice in mind. And there's a notice in when you get the thing that if they
In some of those.
It just gets old.
I understand. In some of those, um some were elderly and not needed help and I actually went to their house and helped them sign and um one had turned later, so they were all different instances, but I I can appreciate what you're saying.
Right, no, but I'm not, I'm gonna vote for it, but I just, the one comment was that there's no notification and that's not true. The same way you.
Do we usually just one notification or can we use two?
It comes in their tax thing. When you get your tax on your property, it it tells you about it.
Yeah, we um we gather, we have a list and anyone who got it last year, I send it out to each and every one of those. And then there are new people that have just turned as well that we have no idea who they are. And so it's up to them to provide it and we have it um, we have it noticed on um the post office, First Bank, uh City Hall and the website and on Facebook. So those are, but some aren't on those, so we do provide notice.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Consider city contributions or PSD for FY twenty twenty-two?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, just could you, you're talking about property taxes. I'm not sure if um John had mentioned it, but when it comes to property taxes in the field, we do not receive any at all.
Good.
Yeah.
No more.
Yeah, so that was. Anyone in all, do you still want him to come down and discuss?
I I I don't.
You don't need to answer that. Like you wrote a letter on the field, right?
Yeah.
I think it's the council saying.
Yeah.
Yeah. That is Craig City School District, but you, I don't, Mr. Mayor.
That's all right.
So since it's been a lengthy meeting and we're voting next meeting, can we wait to discuss this?
This is, is, are they on the phone to present anything?
I don't believe so.
Okay, then let's wait till they can be here too, because I got some questions to ask her before.
Oh, alert them that Jim has questions.
Yes, the school?
Just to you, Jim. Um I have one council comment.
At the scholarship commission.
Oh, we added that. Dang it, I'm really trying to move this stuff. Um, do we know on the scholarship if they've reached their goal of four thousand? Cause I know they've, I know some businesses have donated.
I don't know at all.
The scholarship, if they they had a goal of four thousand dollars and I was just wondering cause I know I know of at least two businesses that have donated towards it, so I'm just wondering if they met their four thousand dollar goal.
It's always good to give more money though, cause then they give it to the students, right?
Or do they? I'm just kidding, is it?
They just pocket it.
They do, they do, I'm kidding.
Hey.
It's your baby, Mike. You wanna do their entire amount? I think their their total goal was four thousand.
It's not fair. All right, let's uh let's put the onus on.
I think.
Capitalist, let's say two thousand.
And make second and approve two thousand dollars for the scholarship fund. Discussion on this.
Where would that money come out of?
Uh, it's not otherwise specified, just the general fund. Are checking, Kim.
I feel cheap, but I feel like that's a lot of money. But my husband has me at town, I'm too cheap, so maybe it's just me.
Yeah.
If it's just me, I'll rule with it.
Well, going forward, our our future leader.
So long as they give out, move it out and maybe they could give us a little recognition when they give it out.
Hey. All in favor of that?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Two thousand dollars to kids. Council comments?
I had one in response to the forest. So he, it sounded, I got from what he was saying that really our window of opportunity to comment and be effective, cause it sounded like comments to the Board of Forestry is kind of, they could either listen to you or not, it may not even be discussed. It's from, I got from what he was saying, public comment on sale of public land. Like when those notices get posted, that's really our window of opportunity to make a comment that would make a difference. And forgive my own ignorance, but I don't know when we're to look for, do we look for that? Public comment?
It's usually in the island news.
Well, that, they, I think they sent it to us and unfortunately in the past, we've agreed with some of the things that they've done.
Okay.
And actually helped them out.
Can we make a point to in the future when that comes to us to start commenting on it? Cause that seems like it's really the only time we have to do something that makes a difference.
It is.
If you read through their entire thing, you asked, send the the comments to the board to ask them to change something. Then it sounds like they go through this huge process that's gonna get political and they, like you said, there's not a lot gonna happen.
No, so can we somehow make a point to start commenting when those notices come out? I don't know how to make that happen.
I think that if we ask that gentleman, he would make sure that they made us any of their new sales.
Oh, that would be good. Can we ask him to do that, John?
I would think that he would could make sure that we get, I don't know, the state sale with the mental health trust and the university sales. So we have all three of those properties on this island, by the way.
You're talking about commenting on uh kind of the operations.
When they, every time they do a sale, there's a public comment on the sale.
He said, he said we need to public, I wrote it down, so I wouldn't forget. He said, public comment on sale of public land. That that's our opportunity. So he said, when those notices go out about sale of public lands.
Yes, and they commented actually not long ago on the sale. Council authorized comments, so you can put it, make an incumbent upon staff to put, say, in the, on the agenda and review correspondence, notification of timber sale.
Yes.
And then that council can see that in the package and say, uh, we want a comment, so we don't.
Yeah, can we do that?
Sure.
Right, that comment uh creating, uh, land swaps, when they do land swap with the forchers and the state like they did over Hollister, they traded it for the land going catch a can of sugar.
And I think we received notice of that.
Before that, I believe, unfortunately.
Those are rare.
Yes, they are.
Compared to timber.
Extremely rare, but.
So at least we did, did approach it.
All right, Millie's tired, we gotta go.
I'm I'm the promotion during.